7:00 PM. If there's anyone present who may require special assistance to participate in this public meeting, please let us know, we'll try to assist you. Roll call?
Mayor Ketterich.
Here.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember Fauch.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
And Councilmember LeFever.
Here. Are there any amendments or removals to tonight's agenda?
That was an oversight by both of us. When she typed it up and when I approved it, neither one of us even noticed that we didn't have citizens' questions and answers on there. I mean, we've always done it. It's not an emergency though, so usually they say it should be an emergency if you have something. I mean, it's up to you guys, but that's usually what they say.
I make a motion. I have a question. A second.
And is that with the approval of the agenda or just that?
Yeah. I approve the agenda tonight. I approve the agenda.
We'll add it to the budget workshop in session. Okay. Any questions, other questions, comments? I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, having citizens' questions and comments before the budget work session. Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Tonight's agenda has been approved. Agenda item number five is approve the consent agenda. This is approval of the minutes of the January 7th, 2013 regular city council meeting, set date of Monday, February 4th, 2013, at 7:00 PM for our next regular city council meeting, and approve claims register.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. The February 4th, the next regular meeting, and approve the registry and the minutes of 7:00, 1:07 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Motion and second, Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Agenda item number six, discuss offering police officer opening to Justin Miller.
Pretty big there, huh, Mr.?
Where'd you leave this, Randy, out of the last words?
That was just a meet and greet, and people just came in asking questions, starting from how he's doing and stuff like that. Did you guys have other questions answered you want? Nick, I knew it, your kids were sick unfortunately.
Seemed like a nice, fine, upstanding fellow. He's got good addition to the park board.
And that's what I got through the interviews and stuff too, so.
Hey, Elmer, so what's the recommendation here to hire Justin? And, you know, compensation and arrangements, what's that look like?
What we're doing, we'll be doing the same thing we did for Kyle when we had him, as far as wages. We were thinking about maybe sending him early like we did Kyle, and he agreed to extend the probation, but I think we've rethought that, and I think we'd like to watch him for six months before sending him in.
For the compensation, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but what we do is we withhold quite a bit of that. They sign a contract, and then on their anniversary, they would receive a bonus to make up for the wage difference, so gives them an incentive to stay, to help us out after us spending the money, put them through school, so.
And then the thing with this guy, do you just go to the short course, or do you just drive it up? I'm staying there. I think it'd be a great idea to have him on, so. I make a motion to hire Justin Miller as a police officer.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Okay. We have approved to hire Justin Miller as our third police officer.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, discuss appoint, excuse me, number seven, discuss appoint park board members, so.
I think, Randy, I'd like to see this done individually. Instead of as a group, is that okay?
I agree.
I'd like to make a motion to start with Maxine Lesline.
And we have three three-year terms and three six-year terms. Are you going for a three-year term? Okay. Yes, Brittany's the only one still on, yep.
I'll second that motion.
Questions?
What was Brittany's term?
I think that she still got two or three years left. Is that right? Two or three years. She should come through by the time of the three years. Any other questions? I have a motion and a second for the first park board member, is Maxine Lesline, for a three-year term. Councilmember LeFever.
I abstain.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Maxine is approved, going to the park board for a three-year term.
I'll make a motion for Nikki Allen, the park board member.
And for Aldean, your term.
What is three years and what was in?
Six years.
Let's do six.
I second that.
Any questions or comments on Nikki? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Okay. Nikki Allen is approved for a six-year term.
Keep going, do your own thing. Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Tom Hoff as a park board member. And six-year there too.
Six-year, okay.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments on Tom? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Tom's for six years.
I'd make a motion for Curtis Hinkle, so park board member, for a three-year.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on Curtis? Can you, Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Okay. We have Curtis Hinkle for a three-year term.
We've done Gary.
No, he's actually off.
We've already, we've got to book him on.
If, yeah, if you wanted him. Brittany's the only one that's currently on that has any term left, or any time left in her term.
I'm not going to let you finish the last three.
I'll make a motion for Gary Norby for a six-year term. I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments on Gary Norby? Okay. Councilmember LeFever.
Nay.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Gary, you want to pass for a six-year term?
I make a motion for a six-year term for Gordon Fleet. I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments on Gordon Fleet? Councilmember LeFever.
Nay.
Councilmember Clark.
Nay.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
I make a motion to appoint John Estamella, six years, to be on the park board. I'll second that.
Any questions or comments on John Estamella? Councilmember LeFever.
Nay.
Councilmember Clark.
Nay.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
I think we exhausted the list. Refresh my memory in terms of members and agenda members.
I believe we voted in seven members, correct? And so we'd need to, so we'd need to be four in three different ways before we can order four guys. Seven members.
Well, I think we can run on five members until we find somebody, or two persons that we all can agree on.
Just so I'm, just so I'm clear, so we have Nikki Allen and Tom Hoff at six years. Then we have Brittany Norby, who's existing, and Maxine Lesline and Curtis Hinkle for three years. That's where we're at, so we have five. So we've got seven members total of this board, so we'll go out and see who else has an interest.
Okay, well, we've got some help for Brittany. Hopefully, spring gets here soon, so she'll be doing something in the parks, so get that going. Agenda item number eight is discuss appoint park board commissioner and secretary. For the prior board, Brittany was secretary, and Gary was commissioner.
She's expressed that she wanted to continue being the secretary. I make a motion that Brittany is still secretary.
Do you want to do them separate, or? Okay. Have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments before I take the vote? Okay. Motion and second for Brittany for as secretary of the park board. Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
We have secretary appointed. We have someone we'd like to appoint as the president and commissioner of the group we just named. I would say one of the six. And I know that Tom has experience running meetings and stuff.
Excuse me?
I know that Tom has experience running meetings and stuff. He might be a good one, just, I mean, this is just my input, and he's run meetings, I know with some of the places that he's worked at.
I think Tom and you know him.
Yeah, I'm sure Nikki's been on a lot of meetings too, I guess. Yeah, she's been on the chamber and other things, so. Nikki the one that'd be great, so.
Do we have any idea if they would accept if I offered?
Nikki?
She's there.
She's.
You didn't put my name in there, did you?
Yeah, I was thinking about you.
Oh, keep thinking.
Nikki, you are here.
I heard you were here. Nikki'd be your best bet.
She has declined.
Yeah, she's currently president of the chamber, which I know that sometimes you don't want to be president of two different operations, running the same thing, of course. And so this is supposed to be a yearly appointed thing, and I didn't really realize it until we were in there, you know, this is a three-year, it's supposed to be, yeah, so. But some of this stuff we never knew until we ran out of terms and everything else, so.
So it's something you appoint every year?
Yeah. So if it was a three-year, I think it'd be all right, you know, just be.
I'm already president in Quanis, and I'm horrible at that, so. Yeah, there's plenty of people in Quanis who are horrible at it.
She's saying things.
Sounds good.
Yeah, she runs meetings, I think, with what she's been doing and stuff.
Brittany and her are both a one-year then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to make Maxine Lesline the commissioner of the park board.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? I have a motion and a second for Maxine Lesline as park board commissioner for the next year. Councilmember LeFever.
I abstain.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Nay.
Councilmember Crum.
Yes.
Okay, two to one, so.
It's going to be three.
Is Maxine the only one that has experience? She's probably the one.
Yes, because everybody else is new. I mean, I think Curtis would be pretty active, you know, in the park board, you know, send his name in, so I think he'd be all right too.
I make a motion for Curtis Hinkle to be president of the park board for the next year. I guess upon you agreeing to do that.
Right. And if we get two more persons on there, and he decides to decline, then at that time, you know, we can appoint somebody else when we appoint the other two members, so.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
For the next year, Curtis Hinkle will be park board commissioner. Okay. Agenda item number nine, discuss bids for new water pickup. We put this in the budget for this year, when we have. Scott, I believe you're here, correct? I believe that the plan is we take the existing water truck and remove the box from it and use it as our spray truck. Is that correct?
Correct.
Because the body and everything is good in it, but the box and everything's falling apart.
Yeah, it's a 1999, so when I talked to these guys, they said it's, it would be dead without the trade, so. It's got 70,000 miles on it, pretty much all down, so it's working, it's really not too bad, or better than our freighter, so that's the plan. And we could, we fell out a little black truck down, or put it up, do a bid or something, or pull it still around and everything, but.
So yes, the plan, and what they would like to do is switch that over to the water truck, or to the spray truck, and then we could either sell the spray truck or do something with that.
Who's this with?
We actually have three bids here.
Who's got that?
Just the existing trucks, yeah.
Are they off early, so?
Yeah. Sorry, yeah, we would switch over, he said that the new truck, the current water truck, we wouldn't be worth trading in, is what they've given him an indication on. With the spray truck getting quite old, we would get rid of it and transfer this over to be the spray truck. We would put the spray tank on the back of it, and because the box is what's really bad on this truck, so, on the current truck, so. The current one is a 1999, so it's been a very good truck, and I think it will continue to be in that, in that purpose, so.
And then he also said about the second truck.
Yep, the second truck, we could, yeah, we could probably get rid of the black truck, yeah, so. We had three bids come in. Usually on these, it's best to go through a fleet dealer, as you know, most of these new say fleet on them. Woodhouse came in with an F-250, four-wheel drive, to switch it over with the box and everything. They had a bid of $33,137. Then we had two bids from Sid Dillon, they bid both Chevy and a Ford. The Chevy that they bid is $31,582, and that is with the new box being put on. And Ford F-250 that they bid was $30,408.
Scott, any thoughts on the Sid Dillon, and that's a little bit?
Yeah, the two Ford are basically identical trucks, so. But I think that's what we had in the budget, was $30,000, $33,500, so, we're right off the money, so. It doesn't really matter, I'd say, to all the people, they're all comparatively the same, so.
You've looked through all the stacks and everything, it's what you need?
Yeah, pretty much identical, yeah. If you look at Woodhouse, it had a change on, we're going to put a.
You want to come up? Can I get you to come up here and, just so everybody can hear what you've got to say?
The Woodhouse one has, has a change, we're going to get a low ladder rack on it, like they have on this one, and then they put on there, if we wanted to rack over the cab, it's an extra $250, but he priced it with the rack that doesn't go over the cab, which isn't really what we want, so that, that bid of 33, whatever one there is, with the low ladder rack, the other two bids are with the low ladder rack that doesn't go over the cab, so, so they're basically identical, so.
Do you guys have any other questions?
You don't care which one?
No, it doesn't matter, we've been driving Ford, that's what we got. I had him just price a Chevy too, just to see what it came in at, and they were going to price me a Dodge, but they didn't send me one on a Dodge, but since they were kind of right there on the, on the Ford, I figured we were good, so.
Any other questions from the council, or do you have any decision you want to make tonight, or in the next meeting? I know that this was put in the budget for this year, so we don't have to borrow any money for it, which is kind of nice to not have to borrow money for once, so. Any timing issues that we're aware of on incentive for acting sooner than later?
I didn't ask them that, but, you know, I would say in the next month or two, yeah, I could find out for me, but.
But any, any?
I guess what you're asking me is if we wait for a month or two, is this price still going to be good, is that kind of what you're saying?
Exactly.
I guess I can't answer that for sure. I wouldn't think it changed a lot, because they have their 2013 price, so, I wouldn't think they'd go up now, but.
They don't have a quote cancel date on here anywhere where I see, but usually, most of them leave up 30 days, or.
Yeah, that's the standard.
I know, but I see anything.
Take. Have to get out beyond the 30-day limit or something.
It's in this year's budget, right, Randy?
Yes.
We've been planning for this, we have the cash to buy it.
Yeah.
We have a need, right, Scott? So I make a motion to accept the offer from Sid Dillon for $30,408 to purchase the new water pickup.
Okay, this one would be the Ford, 2004.
The 2004, yeah, the Ford.
I'll second that.
Are there any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Motion is approved to purchase a new water pickup from Sid Dillon. Okay. Agenda item number 10, discuss approved resolution 13-02. This was carried over from the last meeting, Mike, since you weren't here. If you want to talk to her or not, I know that you've requested the chief to put her on there.
Yeah, I've had a couple of conversations over the last several months or so with, with the chief and others in the community, and, you know, I never thought that, you know, at the end of 2009, when I was mayor and didn't run for reelection, I never thought I would maybe be concerned about this, but sitting on this side, and looking at, you know, the, I guess, the environment, the temperature for will of the political environment here in Logan, between the Logan City Council and the community citizens here, I would hate for something to get out of hand, and I appreciate, you know, I think over the course of the last month or so, things have settled down greatly, but I was just thinking about that and saying, could I live with myself if something maybe happened, a tragedy of some sort in Logan or anywhere? And so I just wanted to have a discussion around, should we go ahead and think about, you know, banning weapons in city buildings? Not the city of Logan and streets and the city limits and all of that. I'm talking about city hall, I'm talking about the water and sewer plant and parks, so the city-owned buildings and the parks. And that's really what it was all about. And so I would be open for some discussion around that.
Is that a pool?
Yeah, I would consider the pool as well, too. And I think, and again, I just, I'm just getting back, so I don't have all the facts and details, but I, but I would like to get up to speed before the next meeting. I believe there are weapon-free zones that are in an area within 1,000 feet of private or public elementary schools and secondary schools, and 1,000 feet around a public park. And so after looking at that and thinking about that, city hall would actually be covered under a weapons-free zone, because of the proximity to Millam Park over here. I think, and Elmer is here. I think, and Elmer is here, I think we're checking with the sheriff to determine if the, uh, the pool area.
Yeah, well, I guess I just brought that up, and the fact that it is a private park, it's a part of the park for the city.
Right.
I don't know why that would fall on this, either.
Right. So there is that out there as well, too, which I think actually accomplishes what I was looking for personally.
That's what we got now, is that what you're saying?
The weapons-free zone, yeah, and that's how I understand it, and I could be, I'm just getting into this again after being out of town, so, I wanna look into that more, but I think there's a thing, a, a statute of some sort called weapons-free zone, it's a thousand feet perimeter from parks and schools, uh, that you, you cannot, uh, you know, bring weapons onto the property.
And that's a good enough?
Uh, that's what I'm suggesting, is that, if in fact that's the case, what I'm really concerned about is, is, is this building, I don't know Scott, if you feel threatened down at the sewer, the water plant, or whatever, uh, the shop, or, or those sorts of things, but, uh.
Actually, those are, the maintenance shops are probably fall under that, because city park, it's just over the hill.
So is the water plant.
Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, you're probably right, yeah.
Probably doesn't cover everything that we need with that.
Yeah, you're probably right.
So why do it?
Why do?
Go, or do it.
Well, if we already have it, we don't have to do it.
But a thousand feet, that includes the house next door, so the water treatment plant downtown.
Are we open for comments right now?
Not yet.
I think, um, like what you're saying, we don't know for sure about these things, if it's even happening, it sounds like we probably don't wanna vote tonight, anyway. Um, that's why I would say we do just hold this off, and let the citizens have a say in citizens' questions and comments that live here, um, and, did you have more?
No, I just, I agree with that, Randy.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, just to make sure we have all our bases covered in, in what we're doing, you know, instead of jumping to it, I mean, we've had it, gone without it for a long time, it seems like, here lately, I'm not just saying here, but I'm saying in the world, it seems like you hear it one every day, but, I mean, luckily, we live in a small town, that we don't, usually don't see that, so, very grateful of that, that's another reason I live here, so.
And my concern with city hall, was the other city-owned buildings, in the park areas around, the park areas and school areas, was really, was really my concern. Had nothing to do with the city of Logan, or any of that.
I made some of my feelings known in the last meeting, when it came up, Mike, um, I'm opposed to any, any, you know, uh, reduction of our Second Amendment rights, I, I personally, this is all I have, since we weren't, you weren't here to discuss that, um, I'm very much opposed, as I've read further through this and talked to more people opposed to this particular resolution, even with the aside qualifications of what it does and doesn't include, I wanted to bring it up, particularly to, you know, put this to bed, I didn't want this to come back up in any way, shape, or form as it is presented right now, so that's really my interest in bringing it up, um, 'cause last time it was talked about putting it back on, and we had some people voicing concerns and others that were going to and wanted to, um, that, that's where I stand on it.
I kinda agree with Skip on the, as far as the resolution, I don't agree with the gist of the resolution in its entirety, um, I don't, I don't like the thought of stepping on the Second Amendment rights either, um, I know there's a safety factor, so, that's something to consider as well, so, I think it's something to keep discussing and going over, possibly.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and, and I think, if I understand, and we need to, to dig into the, the weapons-free zone, as I, and I'll say one more time, I think that covers what I was looking for, and so I think it's already out there, we would pass a separate resolution, but, uh, I'll get a lot more in-depth and detail around that between now and the next meeting.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments on this issue? And, uh, just from what we said here, I take it we don't wanna take a vote tonight, correct? So, I just wanna make sure before I move on. Okay, agenda item number eleven, uh, is update on clerk administrator position. We have the two that are done, and I'll go with those, Mike and Dennis, and, uh, if you wanna call in back in, say you would come back in for an interview, I'm sure, and, uh, I believe we have one set up for next Monday, right now, and, if we could get them all set up for that night, it'd be great, and we can just get them all out, so. Anybody have any other questions for me, or?
Randy, I'd like, Randy, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, make sure that on the February fourth meeting, that we have upon that meeting, uh, to discuss and approve a potential city clerk.
I agree with you, I hope we are ready.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we have a discussion of clerk, and, uh, we have a motion in a second to have somebody ready by the fourth for that, uh, agenda, Councilmember Luthimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Do the best I can, I don't know how to hold on that, so, I guess, no.
Okay, uh, agenda item number twelve, update on CBDG housing project, um, Marilyn talked with, uh, Mr. Redeman earlier this week, and, or the end of last week, sorry, and, um, right now we have one house in progress, um, they should be done in about here before too long, the second house has been approved, they plan to start around April first, um, I believe it's got a lot of windows they're doing there, so, a little warmer weather for those people, um, and I believe you said that right now we've still been doing walkthroughs, he's done a couple more.
He's getting ready to do more walkthroughs.
Yeah, he's getting ready to do more walkthroughs, and, um.
Second half of February.
The second half of February, okay, so hopefully he'll have his walkthroughs done then, and, he had one of the applicants that he was having problems getting ahold of, so, um, he was contacting, uh, coordinator Chris Hartwig to try and help him out and, and get that person contacted, so. So that's where we're at there, um, he mentioned to Marilyn that, you know, he feels like we're on target for what we need to be, uh, to get things done, um, I think our deadline is like the end of September, but I know that he said before that we could easily get a six-month extension, but, hopefully we shoot to get everything done before winter, so that everybody's done, and, and, uh, we spend our money wisely and get that taken care of, so.
Have we had any comments relative to the quality of work being done?
I have not, from the person who's got it, um, Marilyn, if they come in and talk to you.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Um, that's certainly a question we can ask Babe when he comes over.
Okay.
And those are public meetings, so if you wanna.
I've been gone some, but I've heard that there's been some grumblings about, uh, the, the quality of work being done, so I wanna check in down a little bit more, and I can give you some more feedback on that in a few days.
Sure, yeah, we can check with them, and, uh, with whoever the homeowner was, and find out.
Isn't he gonna have us, or let us go through ones that were finished?
Yes, there'll be, um, a representative that has to go through, at least one representative that has to go through on the final walkthrough, they'll have the list of what was supposed to be done, and we, we make sure also, along with him, that everything was done, and it's done up to code, and it's done to, to satisfaction, so, yeah, otherwise the contractor doesn't get paid if we don't sign off on it, too.
The homeowner has a, the homeowner has some opportunity to, I guess.
The homeowner has some opportunity to, to petition any issues they may have?
I believe so, I can ask him that, but I'm, you're right, he's ready, that's why I thought, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, because they've got the list of what they want it done, and they get the, they get, they actually see the bid and everything that's in, in quite, uh, required of the contractor to do, so, so they know what it needs to be done to, so. Okay, anything else on this issue? Okay, agenda item number thirteen, uh, was discuss agenda and packet procedures, um, do you wanna take this?
Uh, I requested this on there, because, uh, I know some weeks, we don't get our packets till, like, Monday for whatever, whether it's, there was one week where we didn't get a email that they were done, nobody heard about it, and then didn't get the packet till, you know, Monday afternoon, or whatever, um, I was just wondering if there's something we could do as far as, uh, like, prelim, like, I know I've been requesting preliminary agendas from you, Randy, and I, I kinda like that, I was just wondering if we could make that more of a procedure, to where we get a preliminary agenda on maybe Wednesday, and then the packets by like noon on Friday, um, I know if, if there's anything we have to research, or anybody we have to contact, a lot of times it's hard to get ahold of anybody, 'cause, you know, if they close at noon, or whatever.
Um, putting out the agenda early, would I know by Wednesday, I can certainly do that, not a problem, um, I know that Marilyn had mentioned to me that, uh, there was one Friday that she didn't email people, she had to leave her family, and that was probably the one, um, hopefully, um, you know, we'll do the best we can to get them out as early as we can, um, you know, once we get somebody hired and somebody else help them put it together, that should hopefully bring down the time, this week was really late, because, but we had a lot going on, a lot of things to try to get together, but, um, and, if I get the preliminary agenda out on Wednesday night, maybe that'll help Marilyn, too, maybe some of the items can take the air of earlier, but, um, guaranteeing by noon every Friday, with mail coming in and claims and everything, I, that might push that, but hopefully we could see if we can speed that up. What do you think Marilyn? I know that, uh, it's really a push right now, so.
I, I can't guarantee that they will always be done at noon, I just can't, because of everything else that I have going on, um, if you wanna come in at four, I would say they would be done, but, noon is, noon is pushing it for me, because of the payables and everything that have to be done.
Can we do it electronically?
That's what I was calling, Mike.
Wondered if we could do it electronically, that way you wouldn't have to come in and pick them up, when they're done, they're done, they're out there.
Most things could, um.
I'm not trying to make more work for you, so please be honest with us, but.
Like, the, the truck bids, this, this time, would've taken a long time to scan, and email, but, you know, if we don't have.
But most of the stuff normally, we probably could just email out.
Most of it could be, yes, I would say.
If we could, if we could get a new copy printer machine that would, um, scan, it would probably be a lot faster, correct?
And that money is in the budget for this year, too, we do need to look at that.
This amount currently?
No, we have a, a, a small printer that do page by page, so.
And Marilyn had mentioned that to me yesterday, so we need to find those bids, uh, that, from business dealings last year, and see which copier it was, and move that toward the forefront.
I agree, there's certain materials that are always gonna need to come out in a packet, they're gonna be bulky, and, but, in this day and age, I think we have lots, lots of opportunities to go, go paperless, I like that idea, to try and do that, I think it'd make everybody's job easier, but obviously technology needs to be there.
Any other questions or comments on this agenda?
The only other comment I would make is, I would, I mean, if you have stuff you need to scan, I can get that scanned in the system, so, I, I can help you with that, if you choose.
Okay, okay, if that's what we want.
Just call on me, I can get it scanned in the system, and send it back to you, give you the original back, send it back to you, you then send it out to everybody.
Okay, that works.
Yep. And I've done that with some larger things.
Right.
That worked, too.
Until we get to the essence, you're right.
I know we get it with some personal, there was a home coin toss.
Yeah, yeah, those were taken for every year when they were thirty pages, so. Anything else? Okay, um, we will have citizens' questions and comments this time.
My name's Vincent Orr, I'm a resident of Harrison County, um, I'm the newly-elected president of a shooting club that's northeast of here called Nebraska Territorial Rangers, we're a cowboy action shooting club, during the seven months of the year that we shoot, we draw anywhere from eighty to a hundred people on a monthly basis, and close to two hundred people for our annual shoot that's held in August, um, we draw, we're one of the largest clubs in this area for about a four-hundred mile radius, so we get people that come to shoot here from a four-hundred mile radius, and a lot of them come through Logan, they buy goods and services, they stay at the hotels, um, they contribute to the community, uh, when I think about, uh, resolution thirteen oh two, I think about how gun-free zones didn't do any good for the Sandy Hook shooting, and, I think anybody that thinks about this stuff rationally realizes that, that a gun-free zone often is an advertised target for that kind of, uh, man, um, the last thing I wanna see is a bunch of signs around all our parks, you know, advertising, hey, you know, if you're a criminal psychopath, come here, you know, I, I, I don't wanna see that, um, all the shooting we've done out at our range, knock on wood, we haven't had one accident, and we shoot a lot of rounds ammunition, we have a lot of people, and we stress safety all the time, so, um, I'd, I'd like to impress upon the, uh, the council, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, when this resolution comes up during our next meeting, give it a motion and kill it, 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 it's a knee-jerk reaction, I think a lot of people want to, you know, do something, and, um, really, the best thing we can do is get, you know, armed guards in our schools to protect our kids in these, uh, gun-free zones, because of, of the way that's been legislated, um, that's all I've got to say.
My name's Emily Walker, I'm a resident here in Logan, um, avid gun owner, hunter, just recently took my concealed carry class.
Can you give us your address, please?
Oh, four two one, North Fitz Avenue, um, I guess my concern is, you know, what do you consider the cemetery? I'm within a thousand yards there, does that mean I have to carry my guns in my home? You know, that's something to consider, the residents around your gun-free zones and things like that, um, also, I have to agree with the gentleman for me, the little stickers in the buildings, your resolution, if somebody's meaning to do somebody harm, it's not gonna stop them, so, please take that into consideration, and thank you for your time.
My name is Ron Duncan, two nine four seven, Ogden Avenue.
Uh, Mr. Duncan, could I have you grab the mic right there, so that everybody out here can hear you?
My name is Ron Duncan, two nine four seven.
It's on.
Two nine four seven, Ogden Avenue, I certainly agree with the first two comments that the, the folks made before me, I just wanted to bring up the fact that, uh, I, I called the Capitol Building the other day, and I had a, uh, representative mail me the, uh, bill on seven twenty-four, it's a law, that's twenty-eight prohibition of regulation by political subdivisions, and it states political subdivisions of the state shall not enact an ordinance regulating the ownership, possession, legal transfer, lawful transportation, registration, or licensing of firearms, and the ownership, possession, transfer, or transportation is otherwise lawful under the laws of this state, an ordinance regulating firearms in violation of this section exists. An ordinance regulating firearms in violation of this section existing on or after April 5th, 1990. And I'd like to just present a copy of this to the mayor if I could, is that possible?
Any other citizens?
Renee Sprigston, 105 West Fourth Street, as a non-rational citizen of Logan, I believe in everybody's rights to bear arms, whatever. My concern is, as a parent of 15 children, that we need to have some guidelines put into place to ensure their safety. I have the right to come to a city council meeting and not feel intimidated because a council member might be wearing a weapon. I think that other people have the right to go into a courthouse and not fear, you know, whatever that is. Within reason, we need to have something in place to ensure the safety of our children. You know, Mr. Johnson, you are adamant about the safety of your daughter with Milman Park just because you don't have a fence. I have the right for my children to be safe to go into the park, not thinking that somebody is going to think that my kids are breaking into their home or into their backyard and somebody's going to plow it down. I have that right as a citizen and a parent.
Susan Bonham, 1010 Skyline Drive. Randy, I guess I would like to know, I guess I don't understand your policy. Sometimes you let people outside the city limits speak, sometimes you don't. It's hit and miss, what gives?
At the last meeting, or not the last meeting, but a meeting a few meetings ago, the council had allowed people to, that were outside of the city limits to speak, so I just continued on with that tonight.
So that's going to be your continued policy?
As long as things don't get out of hand, yes.
Okay.
That's what I should be.
Hello. Tom Roff, 204 West Fourth Street, within 1,000 yards. I don't own a gun, I don't want to talk about guns. I would like to speak briefly to the park board, and I appreciate, say how much I really appreciate the council finally moving forward on that, and I also greatly appreciate the consideration for Commissioner, but I don't believe that, I believe that if you take something on like that where you want to be able to dedicate yourself to do the good job in current circumstances, for myself, I didn't feel like I could really do that justice, that's one of the reasons why I'm fine. The other thing I would like to mention is that there were three very dedicated, very loyal, good citizens of Logan whose names were brought up, and they were not brought forward to the, they didn't make it through the vote, and I would like to, you know, say I was a bit disappointed that good people who would be good park board members weren't given consideration for that, and I really would hope that you would reconsider all of them. Thank you.
Any other citizens' questions? Okay, yeah, we will move on. I believe what we have left is our budget work session.